Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, David Tetra. The following is a list of legislation to be presented by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 2354. Resolution Amending Resolution 211, Effective March 2019, Authorizing the Mayor through the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment to Execute Relevant Agreements with Neighborhood Allies to Implement the Creation of Financial Empowerment Centers Within the City of Pittsburgh and Further Providing for Agreements and Expenditures Not to Exceed $30,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill Number 2355. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grand Funding from Living Cities to Support the City's Work with the City Accelerator's Retake Inclusive Procurement Cohort and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $50,000. Bill Number 2356. Resolution Authorizing 82 Opened-In Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services in 12 Categories of Work on an On-Call Basis as Required related to the Assessment, Design, Construction, and Maintenance of the City's Infrastructure, Buildings, and Lands as Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each Agreement being at an Amount Not to Exceed $2,500,000 Annually for a Two-Year Term with Up to Two Additional One-Year Options and Providing for the Funding of the Costs thereof. Bill Number 2357. Resolution Authorizing 126 Opened-In Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services in 22 Categories of Work on an On-Call Basis as Required related to the Assessment, Design, Construction, and Maintenance of the City's Infrastructure, Buildings, and Lands as Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each Agreement being at an Amount Not to Exceed $750,000 Annually for a Two-Year Term with Up to Two Additional One-Year Options. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 2358. Resolution Amending Resolution 751 of 2018, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended professional services agreement with Saint Moritz Security Services, Inc., for security and guard services in order to increase compensation in accordance with applicable collective bargaining unit wage rates. Compensation under said amended agreement shall be in an amount not to exceed $2,482,000 with annual not-to-exceed amounts as set forth. Bill Number 2359. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 653 of 2018, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended professional services agreement with End Time Solutions, Inc., for EMS and Police Scheduling and Timekeeping Services, total cost not to exceed $863,525. Bill Number 2360. Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Zoll Medical Corporation in an Amount Not to Exceed $24,500 for Equipment Mounting Brackets for the Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Emergency Medical Services. Bill Number 2361. Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Zoll Medical Corporation in an Amount Not to Exceed $195,000 for Software Needed for the Operation of Automated External Defibrillators and Heart Monitors for the Department of Public Safety. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number 2362. Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to Divert 75% of the Incremental Parking Taxes from the Garage up to a Maximum of $25 Million to Fund General Construction Costs at the Proposed Block E Development, Part of the Greater Lower Hill Development Project in the Lower Hill Neighborhood of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 2363. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget to Renew the Non-Exclusive License Agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for the Veterans Affairs Highland Drive Campus at 7180 Highland Drive for Limited Use and to Conduct Due Diligence pursuant to the Application Approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to Acquire the Property for Law Enforcement and Emergency Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 2364. Resolution Amending Resolution 563 of 2012, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into a License, Loan, and Maintenance Agreement with the Carnegie Institute for Carnegie Museum of Arts relating to the Restoration, Repair, Re-Installation, Loan, and Maintenance of Sculptures for Allegheny Landing Park. Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 2365. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Third Amendment to Cooperation and Project Agreement for the Creation and Operation of the Regional Data Center Agreement with Allegheny County and the University of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 2366. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract or Agreement with CDW Government to Provide an Information Technology Service Management System to License, Implement, Manage, Operate, and Deliver IT Services to Meet the Needs of the City of Pittsburgh, Cost Not to Exceed $500,000. And Council President Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill Number 2367. Resolution Authorizing the City Clerk and the Mayor to Enter into an Agreement and/or Contract with Vendors and a Consultant for the Purpose of Renovation of Certain Space on a Fifth Floor of the City-County Building, Cost Not to Exceed $85,000. And Bill Number 2368. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on Behalf of the Department of Public Safety for Elizabeth Bliss and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections for Sarah Kenter Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018. That concludes the reading of the Legislation for Introduction. Thank you for listening and have a great day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Regular Meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Kelsmith, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Kraus President, five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we ask that you would then please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Our First Order of Business is Proclamations, and I would like to begin with Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith.
Will Doug Spencer and Wanda please come to the podium? Since I've been in office, and actually before I was in office, I got to know Doug Spencer and Wanda Spencer when I worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools. And Doug Spencer was always a team with Wanda. They always bought a lot together. Together, they did a lot. And you want to face that way? You've only seen me do this 10 years. Wanda works in our office now, and Doug sort of comes along as part of the team, whether he wanted to or not, he's part of our team. But he really does an amazing job in our community. He helps a lot of, he has a great relationships with foundation communities, and he has a good relationship working in mental health and is a longtime social worker for Allegheny County and has done so much to bring funding into our area in terms of an after-school program that needed help, and he got help there. Programs up in Mountain View Apartments, he helped bring some of the people there, they're providing programs now, and has just truly just done a lot. And so, I really thought if there's someone really deserving of a proclamation, it's Doug Spencer. I didn't, I hesitated because Wanda has to live with him after this. But I want to say, thank you Doug for everything that you and Wanda do for our district, and this proclamation is really for both of you, but I just want to acknowledge Doug because he doesn't work in my office, really, he doesn't get paid, and he has really done a tremendous amount of work in District 2. Whereas Douglas R. Spencer, MSW, has worked tirelessly on behalf of handicapped children and adults since 1975, when he was first hired as an Advocate and Community Organizer by the Local Association for Retarded Citizens, known now as ACHIVA. And whereas in the 1980s, he began working with the Allegheny County Mental Health, Mental Retardation Drug and Alcohol Program, and later with Alternative Program Associates, Incorporated. When the late County Commissioner Tom Forrester recognized Doug's passion for serving children and youth who often got lost in the system. And whereas Mr. Doug Spencer, Douglas Spencer, was appointed by the late Commissioner in 1993 to be the Executive Director of the Allegheny Children's Initiative, an agency established by Allegheny County Children, Youth, and Families and the County's Office of MHMR to provide case management services. And whereas, under his leadership, the agency expanded its mission, of course, and was recognized as the premier case management focused on non-traditional community-based services, service provider in Allegheny County. And whereas, technology is Doug's second passion, and he often donated time to provide technical assistance to churches and community groups, as he has done multiple places across District 2. And whereas Doug is currently an independent contractor who works as a behavioral health consultant and is devoted husband to Wanda, a loving father to Quint and Jamar, and a loving Papa to Asia and Jamar Jr. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Doug Spencer and thank him for all the work he has done and continues to do on behalf of our residents, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019 to be Doug Spencer Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please? All in favor? Motion passes. Congratulations and thank you.
I just have to say, it was hard to summarize what all Doug has done in his lifetime in this small proclamation, but I mean Doug, we are just so thankful for everything that you do. So, we can let you say a few words, a few words, okay? Few being the operative word.
You flatter me by all of that, you know, history, but it's just part of the way I was raised, really. Oh, it was part of the way I was raised, you know, basically. I had a very hands-on, you know, grandparents and a lot of aunts and uncles, I was the oldest in the whole flock, and they expected a lot of me, and I hope I've lived up to their expectations. I'm still passionate about Division 2, I mean District 2, and I will do whatever, you know, I have to, to make sure that the families, the kids, and the adults who have problems connecting with the, you know, the established systems, if they get my number, I will do what I can to break those barriers and make sure that they get what they need. It's part of my life's work.
Aw, thank you.
Thank you.
Wanda's only watched me do this for 10 years.
Councilwoman, you have a second procl- with Councilman Coghill?
Did Peterland bring the baklava?
Go ahead, she'll start, and I'll read and I'll chime in.
Well, the folks from Peterland, please come forward.
Jocelyn, Aileen, come on out.
And so, I'm just going to say, if you have never, if you like Peter bread and you've never been to Peterland, you don't even know how great Peter bread really is. This is the greatest place, it's on Brookline Boulevard, I wish it were in my district, but they're family, so I'm going to claim them anyway. And I would just say that there's a proclamation, Councilman Coghill, are you going to read the proclamation?
Yes.
Councilman Coghill's reading the proclamation, but I just want to say, congratulations, thank you for all that you've done, all you continue to do, and in true Lebanese tradition, they can, they'll tell you that they bought something at the end of this, I'll let them tell you. But, you want to say a few words?
Sure, sure.
Or read?
Yes.
Oh, I'll sit there.
Okay, okay. Now, I also want to thank Joe, Jocelyn, and Aileen for being here. You know, if you've ever been to Peterland on Brookline Boulevard, you know, it's got, what's that?
It's a rabbit.
It's got a New York kind of feel about it, you know, there's every ethnicity there, there's foods that I have never seen in my life before, people come, it's really a destination, people come from many different neighborhoods to shop there, and they happen to be Brookline Boulevard's largest employee with 25-plus employees, and you know, they've been going strong now for 50 years, so they're really an institution. I love them, first time I was there, a person I was with said ordered a falafel, I had never heard of a falafel, but I love chickpeas, and I hear they're fried chickpeas, I'm kind of hooked on these things now, I mean, it's a meal all wrapped in one, but, so thank you for all you do, and you know, thank you for, you know, being stewards in the neighborhood as well, we really appreciate it, so. Okay, whereas, Peterland Mediterranean Bakery was originally opened in 1969, and Joe Cheheen, is that right? Okay, good. And his wife Jocelyn began working at Joe's Brothers Bakery in 1974, when the outbreak of the Lebanese Civil War prevented the honeymooning couple from returning home. And whereas Joe and Jocelyn's four children, Danny, Donna, Aileen, and Joey, now help run the business. And whereas Peterland participates in area farmers markets, wholesale products for local restaurants and food trucks, and has expanded to include a fully functioning kitchen, café, and grocery store. And whereas Peterland has teamed up with the Light of Life Rescue Mission to cook homemade lunches for members of the Transitional Housing Nonprofit. And for 50 years, Peterland has been widely loved in Brookline and across the city. Now therefore it be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Peterland, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, December 7th, 2019 to be Peterland Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Congratulations, thank you.
Come up here and say that.
On behalf of my family, I just want to thank the Council and everyone for being here. This is such an honor for our family. My parents have truly lived the American dream in the city, and it's all because of the Brookline community and the City of Pittsburgh that we owe this honor for supporting us for so many years, so thank you so much. Oh, my mom wanted to let everyone know that we're celebrating our 50th anniversary this Saturday at Peterland between 12:00 and 3:00 p.m., and we welcome the community, everybody here, anyone that would like to come, so, that's all.
Councilwoman Smith.
I owe Councilwoman President Kraus tabouli, so I'll have to give you some. So, I just want to thank them, they bought this for City Council, it's filled with baklava from the store. So, thank you very much for your generosity, they're so generous all the time, for this and for everything that you do.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, don't go anywhere. Right, we're going to do picture?
Yes. I just want to say real quickly, too, if you have kids and you want to see them, they can show the kids how they make the bread there, and they give a little tour, and you can see the conveyor belt and how the Peter bread is made, and it's really a nice little tour for kids.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess, maybe we have you next, please?
Yes. Teresa Smith, if you come up with your entourage? All three of you, come on up, come on up. Come on up, all three of you, come on up, come on. All three of you, come on up. Don't be apart. We have a proclamation, whereas Willis Say's Agency for Vision and Empowerment, WAVE, is a worldwide ministry that empowers and changes the mindset and long-term well-being of individuals who have been afflicted by violence and trauma, and whereas Charlisse Smith is the founding executive director of WAVE, there is no accent that the picture and name of this agency is Willis Say's Agency for Vision and Empowerment. Willis Say was Charlisse's mother, who was brutally murdered when she was a child. This was just the beginning of this organization's concept and development over the years. It was also developed from her experience working in the low-income community for over 15 years, and whereas despite her life experiences, Charlisse has continued to work with persons with disabilities. She is the ultimate compassionate, successful businesswoman, and serves the community in which there is the most need. She has been in the real estate industry for over 15 years. She is also an ordained preacher who volunteers at the Allegheny County Jail, and whereas Charlisse Smith has also provided jobs for 15 men coming out of incarceration through her cleaning company and management company. This workforce initiative has been a vision in her mind for over 10 years, and now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Charlisse Smith, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does declare Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019 to be Charlisse Smith Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Congratulations, may I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you so much.
I'm just honored, this has been a very, very long journey. WAVE is actually named after my mom, and she was murdered in front of me, but you know, she lives, and we're really working hard to make sure that the agency provides services for people in low-to-moderate income community. These are a couple of my board members, so I'll let them come up and say something.
Thank everybody, I really appreciate this, I mean, it's an honor for us. Over this past year, I think we put five homeowners, five low-to-moderate income homeowners to be able to own their own home, and hopefully next year we'll double that, but thank you, and thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you.
I wasn't expecting to speak, but I will say Charlisse has definitely been a motivating force for all of us. She kind of united us all, doing real estate and coming together and forming this mission to help low-to-moderate income people. I just commend you so much for, you know, helping us focus and get this done.
Madam Clerk, we have a number of proclamations to be read into the record. We have several from Councilman O'Connor and one from Councilwoman Gross.
Councilwoman Gross presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Harry Hughes for his service to our country. Councilman O'Connor presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare December 9th, 2019, to be Amnesty International U.S. Local Group 39 Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman O'Connor also presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, December 7th, 2019, to be Christian Polk Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting and takes us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning, of course, has three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this opportunity to remind anyone here to speak that our rules of council are very clear when they state that your comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are at this time, or could at another time come before this council for consideration. Profanity will not be permitted, and we will maintain order at all times. I ask that you please- I ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. May we have our first speaker, please? Good morning.
This mic here?
I need your name and your neighborhood in which you reside for our public record.
Jesus Christ Almighty in the flesh, the Son of God. You got it on record. I was murdered last December twenty-second. What's wrong with you people? You have no compassion? You feel no one's pain? I'm a soldier. I've got an honorable discharge from the United States Army. I'm a man. I'm a citizen of the United States, and I'm a king, the king of all kings, lord of all lords. Let me see you can stab with a twelve-inch sword and survive that, any man in here. See, that blood in you is mine, every drop, that precious blood of Jesus, every man in the world. Now, I'm asking the city for some help, please. I'm homeless. I have no job, no money, and you know I'm the Son of God. Look at the tapes at the police station. A hundred-and-twenty-five-year-old church ain't gonna laugh for somebody like me. Calvary been there a hundred-and-twenty-five years. Would you think they gonna laugh for me? Mercy Hospital gonna laugh for me? The Pittsburgh Police gonna laugh for me? No. Please, I just need some help, and I'm asking. I got murdered on December twenty-second. Today is December third, a year later. What's wrong? You people don't feel no pain? That coke got you all messed up? You can't feel, you can't feel human emotion? See, you gotta have a mind and a heart to be a man of God, and I don't see that here. That's why I'm so upset. I was murdered, man, on a city street. I could be your father. Look at this, now I'm fifty-seven years old. I could be your own father, walking down the street, and here comes some punk with a knife. Please.
May we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning. That's my friend that just went out here. And I want to say something about the Sergeant of Arm. He's not in here now, but I do believe that he does have respect for all people, even me. I do believe he does. You see how he moved towards him? Just like last week, when he told me, hm, that I'm not allowed to answer Ms. Gross. I was listening to KDKA Marty Griffin. He had the Attorney General that was on there, and he said that the people was in church or whatever meeting they were at, and they told Bishop Zubik, "You are wrong, that you should be removed." They were allowed to say it. I can't even tell her to don't talk while I'm talking. You have this big yellow constable take up for the little white female that makes sixty-eight thousand dollars a year, and you won't even come to the meetings on time. I'm upset because they changed it for you, and then I didn't get to speak. I sat here all through the meetings. I am upset. What makes you so bitter? Ain't I a woman? Do you understand me? You're not gonna keep taking my rights away. The Eighth Amendment, that's what he did. I'm looking through the things, see, what is he doing? Cruel and unusual punishment he's put me through because I said yes when they said you screwed that woman and gave her a A. Yes, when I told you you'd get ready to work with that group, this community, no, because I'm a whistleblower. I am a whistleblower. And then I want you to listen. That when I was on the bus, the bus driver said, "We're all talking about Trump," but we need to watch you lie. You hear us? He said, "We need to watch you." You are the ones that are giving the money out. You are the ones that are showing the saber. You are the ones that making rules that they're dying from. I'm upset, I am, because I'm proud of you disrespecting me. I am a woman, and I'm telling you, this is our hall, citizens. I might be upset and telling the truth. This is our halls. This is city halls. This is for all of us to be able to come in here. You understand that? Rather than a good reverend that said that the babies shouldn't be able to speak, but she can bring her baby, and I'm talking about you, and send them all in your lap all day. Now, to me, that was inappropriate, but the five-year-old to come to tell you that the sign is down and someone may get hurt, that's what she said. We must tell the police to watch someone could get hurt, and you tell me. But you fight for a white woman and won't fight for my son. I asked you to write a letter. You wouldn't even write that. Didn't you say that the white policeman in Wilkes-Barre should be city police, even though they were serial killer?
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
And I'm sick and tired of it.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. May we have our next speaker, please? Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Lawrenceville and Bloomfield. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President twenty-twenty. I'm the author of Gen Sex: Identity Formation. I pay people to review the text before publication. This PC is public comment, and one that follows will be part of the book. Global Intelligence and Information that Serve as Item. The mayor of Austin, Texas, is a member of the Austin City Council. My PC has to do with what I think is an effort to create a dominion within the framework of council and mayor. A concern of council is the control of the council of the City of Pittsburgh. It is also a very serious concern of many of us as citizens. Mr. Paduto publicly complained that Mr. Ravenstall, as mayor, was illegally attempting to control the city council by interfering with the office of president of council. Now, I have not consulted with Mr. Kraus about this. I don't expect his support, one way or the other, about what I'm saying and what I will continue to say. Is Mr. Paduto attempting to control council via pressure on the office of council president? Mayoral interference with the council office of president is MYCOP, my abbreviation. I, in the Global Intelligence Society, MYCOP probability range for the current office of mayor, Mr. Paduto, is point eight to point nine-five. A counselor to assist in MYCOP, MYCOPA, is key. We consider all district representatives, current and future, to be, to qualify for MYCOPA. I, in the GIS, MYCOPA probability range for one counselor, District Representative seven, Ms. Deborah Gross, is point seven to point nine. Now, in two thousand fourteen, Mr. Paduto went undercover around Pittsburgh. It's two thousand nineteen, is Ms. Gross undercover on the Pittsburgh council for Mr. Paduto? If MYCOP is the, the office removal process sanctioned by, for mayor, sanctioned by the Home Rule Charter, the answer is yes. And if MYCOPA saying, the, it is an impeachable offense to do so and to remove a D.R. from office. To be continued.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Seeing no further speakers, that will conclude the public comment portion of the council meeting and take us into presentation of papers. We begin with our Chair of Finance and Law, Councilman Burgess. Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number twenty-three fifty-four, Resolution Amending Resolution two-eleven, authorizing the mayor through the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment to execute relevant agreement with neighborhood allies to implement the creation of financial empowerment centers within the city and further providing for agreements and expenditures not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Bill number twenty-three fifty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of OMB to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from Living Cities to Support the City's Work with the City's Accelerator Retake, Inclusive Procurement Cohort, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed Fifty Thousand Dollars. Bill number twenty-three fifty-six, Resolution Authorizing Eighty-Two Open-In Professional Services Agreement with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services in Twelve Categories of Work on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to the Assessment, Design, Construction, and Maintenance of the City's Infrastructure Buildings and Lands as Needed by the Various Departments of the City, each agreement being at an Amount not to Exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars annually for a Two-Year Term, Up to Two Additional One-Year Options, and Providing for Funding. Bill number twenty-three fifty-seven, Resolution Authorizing One Hundred and Twenty-Six Open-In Professional Services Agreement with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services in Twenty-Two Categories of Work on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to the Assessment, Design, Construction, and Maintenance of the City's Infrastructure Buildings and Lands as Needed by the Various Departments of the City, each agreement being at an Amount not to Exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for Two-Year, for a Two-Year Term, Up to Two Additional One-Year Options, and Providing for Funding of the Costs Thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Burgess, do you wish to offer up a motion on twenty-three fifty-four?
Yes, I would like to waive the wait so that it can appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee meeting. Thank you very much.
May I have a second, please? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Thank you, Councilman. Twenty-three fifty-four will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Councilman Coggo, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources. May I have Councilwoman Gross for Councilwoman Harris? May I have Councilwoman Gross for Councilwoman Harris?
Oh, I beg your pardon. No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number twenty-three fifty-eight, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Seven Fifty-One, which authorizes the mayor and the director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with St. Mort's Security Services, Inc., for security guard services in order to increase compensation in accordance with applicable collective bargaining wage rates. Compensation under said amended agreements shall be in an amount not to exceed two million four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars with annual not-to-exceed amounts as set forth below for each respective budget year, subject to the availability of funds and annual council appropriation at rates in compliance with and subject to any applicable requirements, including but not limited to collective bargaining commitments and the City of Pittsburgh's service worker prevailing wage ordinance. Bill number twenty-three fifty-nine, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Six Fifty-Three, which authorizes the mayor and the director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with End Time Solutions, Inc., for EMS and police scheduling and timekeeping services at a cost not to exceed eight hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Bill number twenty-three sixty, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Zoll Medical Corporation in the Amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for equipment mounted brackets for the Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Emergency Medical Services. Bill number twenty-three sixty-one, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Zoll Medical Corporation in the Amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for software needed for the operation of automated external defibrillators and heart monitors for the Department of Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number twenty-three sixty-two, Resolution Authorizing a Corporation Agreement between the City and the U.R.A. to divert seventy-five percent of the incremental parking taxes from the garage, up to a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five million dollars, to fund general construction costs at the proposed Block E development, part of the Greater Lower Hill Development Project in the Lower Hill neighborhood of the city. Bill number twenty-three sixty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget to Renew the Non-Exclusive License Agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for the Veterans Affairs Highland Drive Campus for Limited Use and to Conduct Due Diligence pursuant to the Application Approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to Acquire the Property for Law Enforcement and Emergency Management Purposes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill number twenty-three sixty-four, Resolution Amending Resolution Five Sixty-Three, which authorizes the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a Licensed Loan and Maintenance Agreement with the Carnegie Institute for Carnegie Museum of Art relating to the restoration, repair, reinstallation, loan, and maintenance of sculptures for Allegheny Landing Park.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number twenty-three sixty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into a Third Amendment to Corporation and Project Agreement for the Creation and Operation of the Regional Data Center Agreement with Allegheny County and the University of Pittsburgh. Bill number twenty-three sixty-six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into a Contract with CDW Government to Provide an ITSM System to License, Implement, Manage, Operate, and Deliver IT Services to Meet the Needs of the City at a Sum not to Exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair has one new paper. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kraus presents Bill number twenty-three sixty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the City Clerk and the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement with the, with vendors and/or consultants for the purpose of renovation of certain space on the fifth floor of the City-County Building, cost not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. Bill number twenty-three sixty-eight, Communication from Kevin Pollis, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on Behalf of the Department of Public Safety for Elizabeth Bliss and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections for Sarah Kenter for the Act and Pay Policy Revised in June of two thousand and eighteen.
The chair has a communication from the Office of Management and Budget, which was just read. I need a motion to receive and file, please?
Admise.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Thank you very much. That takes us into unfinished business, and with no unfinished business before the council, our next order of business will be reports of committee for final action. We begin with our Chair of Finance and Law, Councilman Burgess. Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number twenty-three forty-six, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twenty-three oh-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance to Enter Into an Agreement with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney to Serve as Bond Counsel for the Purpose of Rendering Any and All Necessary Opinions with Respect to the Bonds and Preparing Such Additional Documents as May Be Necessary. Total Cost Should Not Exceed Eighty-five thousand dollars over a Three-Year Period and Shall Be Paid Using Proceeds from the Debt Issuing. Bill number twenty-three thirty-two, Resolution Authorizing Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars in favor of Randy, James and Randy Coing to Repair for Their Gas Service Line Which Was Damaged by City was damaged by City DPW forestry crew performing stump removal and grinding operations of a city ROW tree at this location on September 19, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Finance and Law. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Okay. Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Under, forgive me, our next committee of the morning is our Committee on Public Safety Services. Our Chair is Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number 2347, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for November 25, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 2345, Witness Supplement in the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI, Article III, Chapter 6, 39, to supplement the code and to regulate set standards and oversee the possession and transfer of crocodilian and venomous snakes and authorize enforcement and the imposition of penalties and fines for violation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Public Safety Services Committee. Further discussion begins with Councilwoman Harris, who has an amendment to present.
Yes, thank you. I have an amendment which is on the out paper that you see in front of you. I forgot to put the ending on, which talks about the provisions of the ordinance do not apply to the institution or facilities which are accredited by the Association of Zoos, Aquariums, and Zoological Societies of America in Class C license as identified in 9CER 1.1, including without limitations to a circus or a zoological park.
Okay. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Not on the amendment, but I want to say that Councilwoman Harris is standing here because she's outside helping the gentleman that needed help that was here speaking. So, I want to thank her for her work there, too.
Yeah, thank you. I just have one quick question, Councilwoman. These are the only changes to the bill.
It's the only changes to the bill. It was the end of it.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment? Then, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions?
Aye.
We, oh, I'm sorry. So, the Councilwoman offering the amendment is the motion. I needed a second.
Second.
Second, thank you very much. Now, all in favor of the amendment? Aye. Aye. Opposed abstentions? A bill is passed as amended. Is there a discussion on the amended bill? Okay. Nope. Okay, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
[coughs]
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
No.
Eyes eight, nose one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Our next committee of the morning is our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill number 2348, Report of the Committee on Public Works for November 25, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 2314, Resolution providing for a contract or agreement, providing for the design, repairs, maintenance, improvement, emergencies, and/or the purchase of materials, equipment, and supplies in connection with the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Program Project, and providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $797,570.66. Bill number 2315, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation under the Multi-Module Transportation Fund to provide funding for sidewalk construction, curb reconstruction, street and pedestrian lighting, and small retaining walls on Irvine Street between Greenfield Avenue and Burick Street Lewis Prague Playground. The grant proposal includes an ask of $840,000 with a local match of $356,452 included in the 2019 capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $1,196,452. Bill number 2316, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from PennDOT under the Multi-Module Transportation Fund to provide funding for the design and construction of the Davis Avenue Bridge. This grant proposal includes an ask of $1,803,533 with a local match of $772,943 included in the 2020 capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $2,576,476. Bill number 2317, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works and Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company to provide an easement to Duquesne Light Company and in accordance with Resolution 564, allowing for the erection, installation, to provide for electricity to power the neighborhood, including Highland Park and its amenities, and use of an underground electrical system and associated apparatus upon the city's property at the Forestry Division on Stanton Avenue in Highland Park for the purpose of electrical services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Public Work Services Committee. Is there further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes seven, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Human Resources. Our Chair is Councilwoman Darlene Harris. May I have Councilwoman Gross for Councilwoman Harris? Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill number 2349, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for November 25, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 2309, Resolution amending Resolution 692, which provide that the city enter into a professional services agreement with Industrial Organizational Solutions, Inc. for professional consulting services in connection with police lieutenant and police sergeant position job analysis by increasing the authorized amount by $50,000 and by extending the term one year.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Human Resources Committee. Is there further discussion on the bill? Then, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called, and those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes seven, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our Chair is Councilwoman Deborah Gross.
President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 2350, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 25, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 2229, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning to receive $80,000 grant award per agreement between the city and the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources executed 5/15/19 to support the development of an Emerald View Park master plan, and to further enter into contract to hire consultants Meredith Chase to develop aforementioned master plan with additional city expenditures not to exceed $55,000 for a total contract value not to exceed $135,000. Bill number 2308, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning to accept a grant from the Pennsylvania Museum and Historical Commission in the amount of $22,000. This grant will be used in conjunction with department funds to execute a contract with Michael Baker International for an architectural inventory of historic structures in the Oakland and Upper Hill neighborhoods of the city not to exceed $102,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Nope. Councilwoman?
So, I'm going to just say, I thought we were holding that bill for...
We gave preliminary approval.
We decided to put it through. Okay. So, I'm just going to say, we're going to watch that, and we're going to make sure who's doing the work on this project. I want to say that this is not the first grant that they've got for Emerald View Park. I don't think that the residents are really as supportive as people are thinking they are. We hear a lot of complaints about the trails, about the hillsides, and what's happening there. And so, I want to make sure, and I do know that my office will be involved in the selection process, but I want to make sure that we're involved in this entire process from beginning to end. And I want to make sure that there's some engineering studies done as well, because you're talking about digging up the hillsides, and we've had enough landslides in the City of Pittsburgh that we don't need to do this one more time, because we're going to try to put in trails where there maybe shouldn't be trails. So, I'm just going to say, I want to make sure that we're involved in this from beginning to end.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, with no further discussion, the bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes seven, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Urban Recreation. Our Chair is Councilman Coghill.
Councilwoman?
Mr. President, I guess I want to make a motion to recommit, after reading, okay.
After reading. Councilwoman Gross, can you come up for a second, please?
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number 2351, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for November 25, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 2319, Resolution calling for transparency and oversight in regards to previously approved corporation agreements, contracts, leases, and special agreements with the Pittsburgh Park Conservancy in light of a voter-approved referendum measures to amend the Home Rule Charter. Bill number 2320, Resolution authorizing and directing the Pittsburgh City Controller to perform an audit of all contracts, agreements, and leases between the city and the Pittsburgh Park Conservancy, as well as administering agencies, departments, authorities, and entities within the Controller's jurisdiction to do so pursuant to the powers outlined in the Home Rule Charter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, as it relates to 2319?
Yes. You know, on behalf of just conversations I had with a couple of council members, I'm going to look to recommit that for one week, because there was some verbiage I think the Law Department recommended that they had a problem with. So, I hope to clear that out. I haven't had a chance to, you know, review it with them myself, so I'm not quite sure as to what that is. But, in the spirit of working together, I think the end game here is that, you know, we make sure that this tax money stays in taxpayer hands, and this is just one small part of making sure of transparency and everything's out in the open.
Thank you, Councilman. I, um...
Give me a second?
Yeah. We do need a second?
Second.
With discussion, Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Thank you so much. So, just because members may not have all gotten, I've had the information in front of me here while we've been in session, because we got it late yesterday, and we were all in session for seven and a half hours in budget hearings yesterday. So, we got this memo late yesterday afternoon. There were two different memos and opinions from the Law Department. The second one that pertains to 2319 specifically requested by President Kraus and Councilwoman Strasburger, we got it 4:15, was about this legislation 2019 that asked the administration to give us all the documentation, and concurrent with delivering the legal opinion, they also leaked, issued this binder, which we all haven't seen yet, which has more than A through P, it looks like, agreements. How many is that? You know, 20-some, 19 agreements?
You're in paper, haven't...
And then, for example, the one that we were just talking about yesterday, the Shenley Plaza Agreement that I was talking about in session yesterday and saying, I didn't have 11 attachments. I just quickly went to that agreement, and there are 11 attachments attached. So, we will now be able to dig into this. And just briefly, even though it's hard to digest this opinion completely, it's questioning two of the sections that we have in 2319. We requested all the documentation. We hope that this is actually all of the agreements. There's no actual index or bibliography of agreements. So, you know, we trust the Law Department, because the Clerk's office didn't have a list, right? So, we trust the Law Department that this is the complete list. But, there are two sections that we could talk about next week, which is that, can council actually terminate any of these agreements? The Law Department's brief here, if I'm reading it correctly just on first read, says that we don't have the authority to terminate. So, that's going to be an interesting discussion, I think, that we have next week. And then, secondly, it was in there, because it's just nice to give people a deadline when you're asking them for things. And the other section that's in there that said, you know, council says that while we're reading these, the administration should not amend them or enter into any new agreements.
Agreed.
And the Law Department says, well, maybe council doesn't have the authority to tell the administration that. So, it's going to be an interesting discussion, I think, next week. So, happy to support the recommit, and we'll be digging into just who is able to do what with these agreements.
Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Are we committing tomorrow, next week?
Oh, the good question. I'm sorry.
Next week.
Okay.
Take it up, not tomorrow, but next Wednesday.
Next week.
Yeah. Councilwoman Kell Smith.
And I want to thank you for recommitting. I actually went down and said I think we should recommit it, because we just got the opinion yesterday, and I appreciate the Law Department giving us their opinion. But, as I mentioned before, it's their opinion, and I think that we should have a legal opinion independent of our own. And we had talked about hiring an attorney to look at this for us, and I think that that's what we'll do over the next week, over the course of the week. Because I think that, first of all, we don't know if all those agreements are in place, because we also found out during the Controller's hearing that he only has contracts and maybe agreements that were signed. And he did see one that I sent him that wasn't signed, I believe, is what he said. So, I'm sure that there's other agreements that may not even have been signed out there. So, I think it's knowing what agreements are out there that are actually signed and authorized in the Controller's hands and the Law Department's hands, and which agreements have never been signed that may still be out there in existence. I think we have some concerns with the MWCDC agreement between them and the Parks Conservancy, and, you know, what that means for the city, and Emerald View Trail, which we just voted on. So, I know I'm going to watch this, and I know I'm going to get other opinions. I'm not, I think that we certainly don't have a mandate from the public. There was not that many people saying that they wanted this. I think an eighth of the voters that came out said that they were supportive of this. And so, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we are watching every dollar, every legal step of the way. We're making sure that there are dollars, and they are protected, and that's what we're going to do. And so, I think that if we have to hire our own attorneys, that's what we're going to do.
So, I would only offer up, in terms of discussion, the importance of separation of powers and exactly why it exists, so that we have a system of checks and balances in place. And that's important, that we keep that in mind as we go through this process. If I may have the floor, Councilman, have the floor. If I may have the floor, Councilwoman, have the floor. Have the floor. So, but, having said that, I have only been able to peruse the, the legal opinion. I think it is quite informative in ways that perhaps even I didn't expect it to, to come in. I have sidebared with the Councilwoman Gross earlier, thinking I may ask the Law Department to actually come up and do briefings with the council to actually go through the, the legal opinion in, in...
We might have our attorney there.
If I may finish, Councilwoman. I think it's important that we, we understand and digest the response to the questions that we have. So, with that, I will support the recommit as well, too. This is a major undertaking for this council, and we have the obligation to give it our, our due diligence and to make certain that what ultimately is before us, we do right. So, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I, I want to thank the council, the council members who sponsored this legislation for agreeing to recommit and to take a closer look at this. I fully support that motion, and will look forward to the discussion next week.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilman?
I use this as an opportunity to share an idea that I've shared over the years. It comes up every now and then on council as to whether or not we should have our own solicitor and our own lawyer. I have suggested, and will continue to suggest, that what we really should do is have someone from the Law Department that, that we have some influence over. You know, it could be someone who is on our staff, but also who is part of the Law Department's attorneys, because I think you wanna be careful. You do not want two differing city opinions, you're right. You want one opinion from the city. Even if we have a differing view or a differing interpretation, I think you wanna be very careful that you don't wanna be, you don't want council's interpretation and then the city's interpretation. But, I do think there are times, and whether or not we need to have them on the floor, we could do that, I still think they should be housed inside the Law Department so they can confer with other lawyers, have, because, to be honest with you all, the, there, we, what we do has a variety of legal expertise, and you need a, you need various lawyers that they could confer with. So, we can talk about it coming next year, but, in the new year, but I think that's, that's something, you know, we've talked about on and off for the last, well, since I've been here, there's been differing versions of what that should look like, and I think we should have that conversation.
Can I say something back?
Anyone else for first round? I had to do that. Then, Councilwoman Kell Smith?
I will say that I, I agree that we should have our own attorneys, but, I mean, I feel that the last time we tried, went down this path, it was an attempt to hire somebody that we all knew, and to me, it was no different. So, I think that, I think this time, we're gonna have to have somebody. But I, but I actually thought maybe Kelly should look at this, because I do think that there's some, some concerns there that maybe she could look into for us, because I was a putter in a difficult situation, but I think at least have her look at it. But, in the meantime, but at the same time, I think Councilwoman Gross, Coghill and I, and Darlene, Councilwoman Harris, have all talked about pitching in for attorneys to look into this, because we wanna make sure that we're doing everything that is right for the residents, and not just being, not just following what somebody was told that, you know, we should do or have.
Council?
Yeah, I just wanna add, I think it's absolutely essential to have an attorney at this point for us, just judging by the law agreement, you know, the recommendation coming back from our law office, you know, whatever it costs. I think we need to acquire an attorney, and it doesn't need to be an attorney, it doesn't need to be the same attorney for this as other issues that come up in the past. We can independently hire an attorney that specializes in this type of law, that's all. So, let's get the budget rolling and get the money out there and get an attorney.
I just have to caution that we've had very little time to really digest the opinion. I think you're gonna be very surprised when you...
Yeah.
...read thoroughly, consume the opinion, and digest it. I think you're gonna find this conversation is probably not necessary.
Well, I'll say this, though, Council President, regardless of that opinion, things that are bound to come up over this new tax, we are gonna need representation, I feel, one way or the other, you know? Not necessarily regarding just this bill today, just...
So, Councilwoman Harris, did you wish a comment?
I'm sorry, I've been out of the room a while, but I, I have been working with...
Yep. No, I just, and at the same time, I just wanted to be remind, be mindful and respectful of the work that many diligent people do in our Law Department and how well they service many, many times over. With that, we have a motion to second the discussion to recommit 2319. I need to do a roll call, Madam Clerk. Correct? Roll call, please.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Then, with the legally required number of votes, 2319 is recommitted. We are now taking under consideration 2320. With no discussion on 2320, Madam Clerk, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called.
President, I just wanted to say one thing. I wanted to thank the administration for getting this to our Councilwoman. First of all, I think they got it to the right person, and, secondly, you know, it's a good step in the right direction as far as, you know, this transparency goes, so...
Councilwoman Gross is in paper heaven right now.
I am in paper heaven. That is true. But, for the record, they gave it to Madam Clerk, as they should have done, and she date-stamped it, but I was just the first to ask for it.
Yeah.
Couldn't wait to get her hands on it, right?
That's true. I demanded it.
Okay. All right. So, then, the bill is now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bill will please vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle? Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Our Chair is Councilwoman Erica Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 2352, reported to the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for November 25th, 2019 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2318, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an amended agreement with B3 Solutions, Inc., for further provision of software maintenance and support services, the development of critical applications, and possible transition guidance for a sum not to exceed $1,709,321 over a five-year period.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill, of this bill under Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Is there further discussion on the bill? Excuse me. Then, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle? Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Kelsmith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Our Chair is Councilman Corey O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2353, reported to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for November 25th, 2019 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 2310, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 308 Miltonberger Street. Bill Number 2311, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh official sewer facilities plan for the 2908 Smallman Street Land Development Project. Bill Number 2312, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 614 Edmond Street duplex, 614 Edmond Street. Bill Number 2313, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning in cooperation with the Director of Public Works to accept funds from an Allegheny Regional Asset District Radical Impact Grant in the amount of $500,000 to fund public art projects in Emerald View Park, Fritt Park, Highland Park, Riverview Park, and Shenley Park.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.